Good evening, councillors and members of the public. Can I just remind people that there's an update sheet that's well worth reading before we get into the meeting? I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations on the screen behind me. There is no planned practice this evening, so if the alarm goes, please leave the building as quickly as possible by one of the three exits, 1, 2 and 3. We assemble across the road under the archway outside the superstore. It's going to be a little bit cold tonight, but waiters will no doubt open the door. Please ensure your mobile phones are switched off. And I'd like to say as a committee, members of the public, we understand that things can be a bit emotive, but please remember that this is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting, therefore refrain, if you would, from expressing your interest by booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. Just to introduce the officers in front of me, Lewis Jones, our planning lawyer, Steve Weaver, the interim development control manager, Rebecca Clark, the principal planning officer who's responsible for this report, and then Catherine Pearson, the area team leader of central and eastern area. So now let's move on to the main items of the business. Number one, minutes of the last meeting have been on the table for the last 30 minutes at least, may I assign them as a true record of that meeting? Thank you. Apologies for absence, Emma.
There are apologies received from councillors Stuart Stennett, John Gray, Mike Band, Paul Follows, Chris Story and Michael Giggredge.
Thank you very much indeed. Three declarations of interest, Emma, what have we had so far?
None before the meeting.
Questions from members of the public?
None received, chairman.
Thank you. Number five, performance against government targets. Steve, do you want to make a quick call on that one, please?
Yes, thank you, chairman. Members, if you went looking through your agenda, looking for the table that was in the area committee meeting papers, I'm afraid it wasn't there. So the relevant table of performance didn't make it on to this agenda, however, it is in the upcoming agenda papers for south, west, east and central, and I'll be happy to take you through that in that forum at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. So now we move on to the application for planning permission, WA 2017. U-Hurst, G67SG. It's an outline planning application for 49 dwellings, including 15 affordable dwellings, public open space, landscaping and vehicle access via the Green Horsham Lane, following the demolition of 44, 45 Larkfield, access only to be determined at the outline stage. It's a revision of WA 2017 0369, as amended by a plan received on the 22nd of January 2018. So now can I ask Rebecca Clark to introduce, please?
Thank you, chairman. The application before members this evening follows a previous application which was refused at committee in October 2017. The committee slides will take members through the revised scheme, showing the differences between the two schemes, and I will then go on to set out the council's current policy position. So the site is located on the eastern side of the green, to the rear of properties in Larkfield and those fronting the green and the street. The site is triangular in shape with a rectangular area to the west. There are two existing dwellings to the western section, and the rest comprises an open field. There's a public footpath which is located to the north of site, shown in blue, and this is separated from the site by a wooded area. There are a number of trees within the site which are subject of a tree preservation order which are outlined in green. The site falls within the countryside beyond the green belt, the western section falls within the rural settlement area of U-Hurst, and the eastern section falls outside the settlement boundary. The Surrey Hills AUMB and AGLV are located to the north of the site, a minimum distance of 570 metres away. The southern tip of the site abuts the conservation area. The following three slides will show members some photographs of the site in question. The first slide shows the photos taken within the eastern section, which is the open field, and the residential development of Larkfield can be seen in the distance and to the right-hand side in the bottom photograph. The top two photographs show the western section of the site, which features the two existing residential dwellings which would be demolished as part of the scheme. The existing access via Larkfield can be seen in the top left, and the open field to the rear of the gardens can be seen in the top right. The bottom photograph is taken from the public footpath with the wooded area separating the site on the right-hand side. The final photograph shows the area of the proposed access for the scheme, so new access would be proposed onto the green, and the red arrows on the photograph show the approximate location of the new proposed access. The top-left photo is taken from the green, looking south, and the bottom photo is taken looking north towards the junction of Cranley Road and the green, and that junction can be seen in the top-right photograph. So the proposal is for outline planning permission for the erection of 49 dwellings, with all matters reserved except for access. The proposed site access would be provided to the west of the site, onto the green. The county highway authority is satisfied that the access would accord with relevant highway safety and the technical design requirements. Although layouts would be a reserved matter, the indicative layout plan sets out that the proposed residential development would be provided in the northern section of the site, and an area of public open space, which would include play area, is indicatively shown to the south of the site. Of the 49 dwellings proposed, 34 would be market housing and 15 would be affordable housing, so that equates to 30%. The indicative plans indicate that the height of the dwellings would be a maximum two stories, and parking is shown indicatively to be provided in a mixture of both onsite parking and garages. So the slide before members shows the current scheme on the left-hand side and the previously refused scheme to the right. The refused scheme was refused for four reasons, three out of the four reasons related to matters which would be secured through a legal agreement. The other reason for refusal was in relation to the number of dwellings, the scale, density, urbanising impacts, loss of trees and the harm to the character and appearance of the area. The difference between the previously refused scheme and the current scheme are set out on the slide. These include a reduction in the number of dwellings from 58 to 49, and there would be an associated reduction in the density with this. There would be increased tree planting along the site boundaries, particularly to the east. There would be a reduction in the affordable housing provision from 40% of the previously refused scheme compared to 30% of the current, and there would be a revision to the housing mix proposed. Turning now to the access, with both the previously refused scheme and the current scheme, a new access would be proposed onto the green, there would be a six-metre-wide carriageway with associated visibility displays. Some off-site highway works would be secured as part of a Section 278 works with the county council, and in addition, there would be financial contributions towards highway and transport improvements within U-Hurst which would be secured by a Section 106 agreement. The county highway authority is satisfied that, subject to conditions, the off-site works and contributions, that the proposed access could be provided without prejudice to highway safety and capacity. Members will recall that the previous refused scheme was not refused on highway grounds. Again, with both the previously refused scheme and the current scheme before members, there would be a total of 11 trees which would be removed to facilitate the development, and these are shown in red. The following slides provide an indicative 3D site view. So this is the main road here, the proposed access into the site. This would be where the residential development would be proposed, shown indicatively to the northern section, with the public open space to the south. This area here is the existing residential development of Larkfield, and the public footpath which is to the north of the site is shown in red. So the matters of principle and technical opinion and matters and judgment are shown on the screen. In addition to the written update, I can verbally confirm that education contributions have now been confirmed by the county council, and this is in relation to the infrastructure contributions which are set out on page 57 of the agenda report. Now turning to the policy updates, so if I could now update members in light of the changes which have taken place in the course of the assessment of the application. To summarise, at both the time of assessing the previous scheme and the current scheme, at the time of the agenda publication, the development plan was that of the local plan 2002. The countryside policy, which was policy C2 of the 2002 plan, was considered out of date, and as such, the presumption in favour of sustainable development was applicable. In assessing the scheme, therefore, a tilted balance, planning balance approach was applied, and this was in accordance with paragraph 14 of the MPPF, which sets out that permission should be granted unless the adverse impacts of doing so would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits when assessed against the policies in the framework as a whole. The tilted balance conclusion was that the harm identified to the countryside was not on balance sufficient to significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits of the proposal in other respects. However, the council is now in a position, with the local plan part one has been adopted on the 20th of February, and as such, the council now has an up-to-date development plan. The policies of this plan now attract full weight. Fundamentally, this means that the tilted balance approach is no longer applicable, and instead, a straightforward planning balance which weighs the harm against the benefits of the scheme is now applicable. In reviewing the proposal, officers have had regard to the following. The spatial strategy set out under policy SP2 of the adopted local plan 2018 sets out that the majority of housing needs for the borough will be allocated through strategic sites. Additional sites will be identified and allocated through local plan part two and neighbourhood plans. This approach was considered sound by the inspector who examined the local plan. The allocation for U-Hurst is 100 dwellings over the plan period. The current site is not an allocated site within part one, and it was not put forward as a potential housing site for assessment in the council's 2016 LA. Nor is there yet a neighbourhood plan in place identifying the site for allocation or development. The local planning inspector confirmed within his report that he is confident that the housing requirements would be delivered over the plan period with the assistance of part two of the local plan and the neighbourhood plans. As such, the council is therefore in a position where it can be satisfied that the housing requirements will be provided within an acceptable timeframe in the plan period and in a deliverable way. In terms of the planning harm, officers have concluded that development would give rise to identified harm to the character and beauty of the countryside. In terms of the planning benefits, officers acknowledge that the development would provide housing within a location close to the rural settlement of U-Hurst, and 30% of this would be affordable. This would provide for social and economic benefits, however, the provision of affordable housing would be policy compliant, and the contributions which would be secured through a legal agreement would be those which are required to mitigate the impact of the proposal. There would be no additional benefits over and above the policy requirement. To grant approval for a development which is neither identified through the local plan part two or a neighbourhood plan would be contrary to policy SP2, the spatial strategy. Furthermore, in that the development would result in identified harm to the countryside, officers are of the view that the harm would outweigh the benefits. This change in position was anticipated by officers, and it was set out on page 64 and 65 of the agenda report. The officer recommendation is now, therefore, for refusal of the scheme. This reflects an updated policy position following review of the scheme after the adoption of local plan part one. The recommendation also reflects the fact that the necessary Section 106 agreement has not yet been completed in respect of the infrastructure requirements, developer contributions and affordable housing requirements. So therefore, just to confirm, the officer recommendation is now for refusal of the scheme. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. We now move to public speaking, and I call on the object, first of all, Mr Brightley.
Thank you, chairman.
You have four minutes. Can you switch the microphone on, please? Thank you very much indeed. You have four minutes when you start.
Chairman, thank you very much for allowing me to address your committee here once again on this particular site. Many of the points that I would have made have now been made by your officers. You do have a local plan part one. There is a definite and stated requirement for 100 dwellings, of which 60 have either already been built or have recently received planning approval. Thus, U-Hurst is looking for 40 dwellings over the next 15 years. If one looks at new applications and outstanding appeals, the number of dwellings involved there is already well in excess of 40, and therefore, members, it is my contention that this particular application is just not required. It is in contradiction to your own local plan, and it is totally outside of the timeframe which your local plan looks at. It would in addition put exceptional pressure on a struggling infrastructure of highways and transport and schools and utilities. I will not make any further comment, as I did last time, about the access, save to say that when 44 and 45 Larkfield were constructed, it was said at the time that access onto the green was unsafe for two dwellings, and I don't know what's changed to make it safe for 49. The only thing in my opinion that's changed is that there are probably twice as many cars on the road. I want to move now to a point I did make to you last time, and I want to reinforce, and this is all about deliverability. I think your members, chairman, will recall that I mentioned last time that there is a covenant on this piece of land which prevents any kind of building whatsoever, and as a result of having one or two members ask me about this at the conclusion of the last meeting, I have had my solicitors send all of the papers to this council, and I trust that your officers have brought that to the attention of members, because it makes a great deal of difference to your view on this. Whilst you can easily say that a covenant is not a planning consideration, deliverability of a scheme certainly is something which needs to be considered, and the deliverability of this scheme is very much in doubt. You refused the previous application, as your officers have stated, essentially because you wished to preserve the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. Additionally, you now have the strength of your new local plan behind you. So for all of these reasons, I wish that you would remain consistent with your earlier refusal, you stick by the principles that you showed with your earlier refusal, and that in this case, you support this revised officer recommendation of refusing the application. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you, Mr Brightley. I now call on the supporter of the scheme, Mr Tim Rodway.
Thank you, chairman. Good evening, councillors. The previous application for 58 units, which was determined by this committee in October of last year, established that the site is sustainably located whilst also proposing a suitable access arrangement. However, members refused the application by the smallest margin with reference specifically made to the amount of development. The revised plans now for consideration propose 49 dwellings. This amounts to a reduction in the extent of development proposed, thereby providing a less urbanising form of development with a lower residential density. The revised scheme seeks to balance the edge of settlement location with the need to provide a meaningful level of development that will positively contribute to local market and affordable housing needs. The proposals represent a significant 15% reduction on that previously considered by members, and we trust that councillors will appreciate the reductions made in this respect, and that the resultant increased spaciousness of the development with associated green space and landscape buffers will be seen positively. The mix of housing types has been revised so as to strike an improved balance between meeting local needs whilst also respecting the character of the wider village. Affordable housing will be provided at a ratio of 30%, which accords with the relevant local plan policy. The eastern boundary of the site has been further reinforced with additional planting, and the ratio of new trees to those to be removed now broadly equates to 1 to 20. This is evidently a significant landscape net gain, and this will combine with the location of the development proposed and the topography of the site to further enhance the contained nature of the development and the positive contribution to the natural setting of the site and the wider village. We are, however, now very disappointed to learn that officers are no longer able to support this application despite initially recommending approval. We acknowledge that there has been a change in planning policy context with the adoption of the local plan part one. However, this document still requires a significant amount of new housing to be provided, with 590 dwellings per year required as a minimum. The new local plan is aligned on a part two allocations plan, or neighbourhood plan, to deliver a minimum of 100 units for U-Hurst. We do not know if or when these documents will come forward, so deliverability is not assured. This current proposal for 49 new homes, when considered alongside other existing approvals in U-Hurst, will deliver the 100 units needed. Officers relate, sorry, refer to a housing supply in excess of six years. The new local plan accepts that there is an under-delivery of around 113 units for the 2017 to 18 period, and further that the actual housing supply is 5.2 years for this current period. This can be described at best as being a marginal five-year supply. Approval of the current 49-unit scheme will improve the council's housing supply position whilst also being consistent with recent secretary of state decisions on appeals in similar cases in other parts of the country. For instance, in one particular case where the existence of a five-year supply was not disputed, the secretary of state confirmed that this does not negate any potential housing benefits arising from the development proposed, as the framework's commitment to significantly boost housing supply extends beyond the current five-year period and the presumption of sustainable development applies. In another similar case, the secretary of state's decision stated that, in line with paragraph 47 of the framework, which requires local authorities to boost significantly the supply of housing, he takes the view that five-year requirement is a minimum and not a cap. The previous application for 58 units was recommended for approval at a time when the council claimed to have a five-year supply and gave significant weight to the then emerging local plan. The only material change is that the plan has now been adopted and the scheme itself has been enhanced. In conclusion, we agree with your officers' original assessment, and the proposed development is compliant with the economic, social and environmental elements of sustainable development test as set out in the framework. We are of the view that the adoption of the local plan does not alter the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Robby. Now call on councillor Val Henry.
Thank you, chairman. First of all, on a point of order, I must declare that I am a member of U-Hurst Parish Council, and that wasn't flagged up at the beginning. Thank you. Thank you, officers, particularly to, my thanks to Rebecca for all the work in the preparation of this report. It's a weighty document, 79 pages, and I can only imagine how much sweat and tears you've put into this report. I'm very appreciative of it. Last Tuesday's adoption of the local plan part one has created even more work for you people, and I'm hopeful that the knowledge of having right on our side, that's the councillor's side and the electorate, will compensate for all the extra works that you planning people have put into implementing these policy changes. U-Hurst, like so many other villages and towns throughout the borough, have been totally overwhelmed by the number and types of developments that have come forward because the lack of a local plan. It has been a very difficult time, a difficult time for us all. There's been a lot of pressure and stress on our electorate and our officers, and goodwill and trust has been tested robustly. I am delighted and wholeheartedly welcoming of the revisions and recommendations that the officers have come up with on their updated sheet. I would like to stress that U-Hurst already has owned up to 60% of the numbers that should be built in U-Hurst, and I'm sure they will well exceed these in the time that is required. So I'm delighted that we are where we are today and to be able to read this updated papers that you've put forward with us tonight. I would like to make a very small addition, and that's to the opening of number one recommendation, and add in there, please, outside the village settlement boundary, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Members, we move into the debate. Before we do that, are there any questions? So something that Steve Weaver has recommended that we do, are there any questions, first of all, before the councillor?
Well, it's a question of a sort. If you look at the decrease in the number of dwellings, it is indeed 15.5%. So looking at the two plans, which seem to occupy very much the same areas, I don't understand how the density can have been reduced by 37%. If you reduce 26.7 to 15, you get down to 22.6. So it doesn't make much difference to the recommendation, but I'm just puzzled as to how there can be such a difference between the two ratios.
Mathematician. Yeah. I think we'll ask the officers to look at that, councillor, or Steve Weaver. They haven't got an answer right now, but thank you. So we'll move on to the debate, and I've got councillor Adams to start.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, as the point was made, the 100 houses is actually a minimum for the village, not a maximum. But apart from that, yes, we have now passed the local plan part one, and the point that I want to make is that we've looked at most of the sites on the LA to assess their comparable positions. Now, this site was not put forward for that, so it's never been considered as a comparable as a comparison to other sites in this area. It is, of course, now on the radar, and I'm sure that it'll be considered by the neighbourhood planning group, but I note that the parish council is against this plan, and as the neighbourhood planning group, the local plan part two is likely to come before the council in 12 months' time, I see no reason to otherwise than accept the officer's recommendation.
Thank you very much, councillor Adams. Councillor Deans.
Thank you, chair. Can I just thank Rebecca for her excellent explanation of the changes, and also I found it very useful on the update sheet where it talks about the retained policies and the weight that we can give, where it actually says on each policy the weight that's actually given. I found that extremely useful, so thank you very much for that. There are a few issues I would like to raise tonight. The first one's about the percentages of the one, two and three-bedroom houses. I know it's outline only, but it did concern me irrespective that... I know it's outline only, but it did concern me irrespective that it should be 50% of two-bedroom or less and it's actually 30.6% and 80% should be three-bedroom or less and it's 69. So that was a bit of a concern when I did read that. What I did do is I looked at the application that was refused, because I think it's always good to look at the information and look at the grounds and I'll come back to that. Page 10, and I'm guessing this is the actual developer, says that there were some positive comments from the parish, which seems to contradict quite a robust objection by Euhurst Parish Council. And I think the point has already been raised by my colleague that there's 14 or 15 years still to go on this plan, but there was quite a strong objection. I think it's been raised at his countryside beyond the Green Belt and Rebecca raised that the eastern side is outside the rural settlement area and it's also adjacent to the Euhurst Green Conservation Area and that's a point that we haven't picked up so far. When you look at the comments from the various people, and it does talk about this is the same land that was previously refused and it's actually probably quite a good slide that you've got up there and no councillor Munnor sort of made some queries about percentages, but just looking at that, those two diagrams, actually there doesn't seem to be a great deal of difference. You'd have to sit and work out exactly where are the houses different. I do not see that as a changed scheme in any way, shape or form. 68 letters of objection, I think that's a clear indication of the local feeling of And I think councillor Adams has already mentioned this is not a site for housing, it's within the Local Plan Part One and has never been put forward for the land availability assessment. And we spent a long time debating the Local Plan Part One to get where we are today. Interestingly, page 26, and I'm getting near to the end, you'll be pleased, but page 26, I think it's a second paragraph and it says, "The test for members is whether, having regard to the changes, the current proposal has overcome the objections to the previous refused scheme and is acceptable in its own right." I then looked at page 24, which were the reasons for the 2017 refusal, and looked at the first reason. Now, accepting some of the policies and etcetera have slightly changed, but absolutely I see no reason why that refusal, those grounds have changed. So I will be supporting the officers for refusing this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Forreski.
Thank you, Chairman. We have a very comprehensive and good report before us and we have an excellent update, which makes tonight quite straightforward as far as I'm concerned. We can talk about this all night, we can see it's minus nine we're heading for out there, so you know, we can talk about it all night, but the reality of it is, is that the Local Plan Part One, I am delighted to say, has given us confidence that the officers now have revised their recommendation to give what we consider the first time round to be the right result. And if anyone was in doubt before, an inspector has confirmed that you were wrong and we were right, so sorry. Now, just going back to the current and the previous application, I agree with councillor Dinas, I see very little reason that you would even support this because very little has changed. In actual fact, although it's been described as a scheme that is enhanced, taken away from 40 to 30%, the very thing that we're looking for, affordable housing, does not enhance a scheme of this nature in any way, shape or form. The joys and benefits of having a local plan, some of us have been singing for a long time from the same hymn book about the importance of it, well, you see it here tonight in front of you. A local plan before us adopted Part One has given us the confidence we need to protect some of these very beautiful places and ensure that they can stay that way for a very long time to come. As I say, they have the option under Part Two and everyone's got their prerogative to do that, but I'm delighted the local plan is forward and it speaks volumes and this is the perfect example of why a local plan is so important to us. Thank you, Chairman, for listening.
Thank you, councillor Forreski. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. If my mathematics are correct, the reduction of 58 to 49 is in fact nine houses, of which seven appear to be affordable. And I can't understand how the applicant thinks that we're going to approve a plan where the onus is weighted against reduction of affordable housing, when everybody must know that the onus on this council is to increase in affordable housing. So I will be voting against.
Thank you very much. Don't. Councillor Bynne.
Thank you, Chairman. We'd just like to reiterate the point, it's good to see a local plan in place and it having effect. Any area in the borough which is not protected by Green Belt is clearly very vulnerable and that has been shown very clearly for Cranley and indeed Euhurst and Orfold as well, of course. So all of these places have had a deluge of applications for development in their area, which doesn't in any way match what might be needed in that area in terms of people wanting to live and expand their activities in those areas. A lack of work, etcetera, etcetera, poor transport, a whole range of different reasons. So I welcome this. Before we came, I'm not quite sure when the update sheet was published, I looked.
Friday.
Friday. Well, I'd have to look back and see that then, I've obviously been very busy and so I apologise for that. But that's, you know, in my mind, I thought I was going to be arguing about if we've got a local plan, everything else in place and that's great, why aren't we applying it? You clearly are applying it, I'm very grateful for that, fully supportive of that and long may that continue. It's good that the developers want to tell us exactly how we should run our borough in terms of housing and tell us all about the local plan and the numbers. I find that actually quite annoying.
Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, having the local plan adopted is indeed a significant moment in the history of this council and bearing in mind that the officers have taken due note of what powers, if you will, are available to them and therefore come up with a different conclusion, it would be quite perverse of me to counteract that and go back to accepting their original conclusion, which was to grant. So I shall certainly not be sporting that approach, but rather the new approach of refusal. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Also, councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, I just really wanted to repeat what everybody else has said, but I think it is important to understand the vulnerability that countryside beyond the Green Belt has had and the reason why the developers have targeted Cranley, Orfold, Euhurst and of course Farnham, because these settlements have no protection or not as much protection as Hazemere, Godling and some of the other villages protected by the Green Belt. And I can remember having probably our first coffee and cake councillor Forreski, talking about what we were going to do to try and fight against the onslaught of developers on countryside beyond the Green Belt. But the tilted balance, the lack of a five-year housing land supply and of course the lack of a local plan made it almost impossible to defend that designation of land and we all know the consequences. So like everybody else, I was reading this report before the update sheet, quite depressed. It's very difficult to defend these sites, we know that. You look for landscape character, you argue that. We had a recent appeal in Farnham where we think it's a treasured landscape prized by local people and the appellant thought it was a scrubby bit of agricultural land just ripe for development. So it's just how you see these things and we have to try and defend the site, or we had to in the past, with very few weapons. So I am just so delighted now that we have a plan in place and we have a reason, a strong reason, to back the officer's recommendation here for refusal and like everybody else, I'm just delighted with the outcome of this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coburn. Just add my own thoughts, you know, we've moved from the tilted balance, we've now got a planning balance, we're not going to be led, we've got a plan that is up and running. It's worth bearing in mind also that this was not a strategic site, so I would just again like to thank Rebecca Clark and the officers for the report, which is very clear and precise. Thank you for that. Do the councillor Munnor, you want to come back? Sorry, sir.
I never actually came in the first place. Not at all. I'm not going to add much, just to say I think the most important point is that local democracy can now be given a chance to work. The whole deal of the NPPF was that the government, in effect, would dictate how many houses we had to take, as we found out, but the local people can say where they should go. And the whole point of having a spatial strategy is to give a rough idea of where the housing should go. There's a long time to go in this plan, in another 13 years at least, and it's therefore premature in the ordinary practical sense of the term to try and solve the minimum in the first year or so. So I for one wouldn't rule this site out forever, but I think the developers should be working with the local parish council to see if they want to put it into their neighbourhood plan. If it comes forward in that, we might take a different view, but let's do things the right way around now, because we do have the power to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, indeed. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I have no reason to disagree with what's been said by other members, except I was just thinking that the comments that we've had from councillor Dinas in respect of the housing mix, I would have thought that we would wish to refuse on those grounds as well. I don't see that in the refusal. Is that, I would think that it would be inappropriate myself. I'm just wondering whether, you know, we've got obviously the reason of the local plan being in place, they're now protecting Euhurst and that's the main reason, number one, that we've got for refusal of consent, but should, are there any other matters from the previous application which, I mean, we did, I think quite rightly, ask the developer to go away and redesign, it was refused when it first came forward, feel a little bit guilty that he's come back with a redesign and now the rules have changed for him, but nevertheless, that's the matter of the local plan, we are where we are. And I don't think that it's necessarily as much of a redesign as we thought we might get and as other members have said, just dropping the numbers by removing the affordable housing is not what we'd have expected. But are there any other reasons apart from the housing mix? I would, I think, want to add that. I don't know whether there are any others, perhaps councillor Dinas, I know he's done a lot of work on this.
I've got one here from councillor Val Henry, so I will put that to committee shortly.
Oh, I apologise, I'm obviously, you're ahead of me. Thank you, Chairman.
Steve, do you want to come in first?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. Yeah, in relation to that question about housing mix, this is an outline application with only access to be considered. And if I can just take members to page 38 of your reports, we consider there the indicative housing mix, because that's all it is. And I think officers were able to conclude, notwithstanding all the countryside issues, but if the site was going to come forward for development, that the site would be capable of providing a mix to meet the council's housing needs. And that's something that would normally get picked up in the layout of any ensuing reserve matters application. So I wouldn't recommend that we highlight that as an additional reason for refusal when it's actually not there on the table for us to refuse tonight. Let's keep the reason focused and, you know, as I said, as Rebecca Clark has said, local plan led in terms of where the site lies in relation to harm to the countryside and your spatial strategy for delivering sites going forwards.
Can I just ask you, Steve, whether you would be happy to accept the point made by councillor Val Henry that it's outside the settlement boundary? Catherine.
I'll have a go at that one. So yes, councillor Henry, you raised at the start whether you could amplify the suggested reason for refusal to include a reference to the site being outside of the settlement boundary. I think there is a key difference between the way perhaps you applied policy C2, which sought to restrict development specifically outside the defined settlement boundaries, and perhaps the test of policy RE1, which is your equivalent policy in the new local plan. There is, in both the NPPF and the new local plan, no distinction between sites that are within the settlement and sites that are without, they are simply within the countryside. And in identifying the harm, you are looking at the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside, regardless of whether it is in a settlement boundary or not. So I think I would advise members at this stage, you would be perhaps on firmer footing to just stick with the fact that this is in the countryside beyond the Green Belt as your reason for refusal and rely on the landscape harm that you would identify as a result of that, rather than having that very specific and probably a bit outdated now caveat of it being outside your settlement boundary. Hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Coburn, do you want to come in?
Yeah, I was just going to add that we did look at the reason in quite a detailed way yesterday to see if we, because we felt it didn't quite have the strength that we wanted it to have, but we were assured by officers that really, as has just been said, at this stage, really and truly, everything in that first paragraph is really what we can and want to say about this particular site. So, you know, I think the officers have looked at the reasons and made them as firm as they believe they can be at this stage.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Val Henry, do you want to sum up?
Yes, thank you very much for that, Chairman, and thank you, Catherine, for explaining the changes in the policies, yes. The headings are quite different and I think it's probably going to take me a little bit of time to sort of realise that. Thank you for your take on the matter, Carol, with regard to the proposal, does it have the strength to stand up, to muster, as it were? And that is very important because we have now seen three planning applications for this site and there is, one has already gone to appeal and we're waiting for the decision on that. If I might just add, just going off piste here a bit. Thank you very much for the debate. It was interesting to hear other pupils' take on the matter, especially people that are not so conversant with the area but are sympathetic to the fact that we do need a plan, a local plan, and how important it is for each of us wherever we live. That was very good. And the confidence that we have in the local plan, and it is indeed a milestone experience and I'm happy to be sat here saying that this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Let's move to the recommendation then, members. The recommendation that permission be refused for the reasons quoted on pages five and six of the update sheet. Can I have those in favour of the recommendation to refuse, please show?
That is unanimous.
That is unanimous. Permission is refused. And that completes our meeting. There's no need to move into any other section of the report. Let me just check. No need to exclude the press and public, so that is the end of our meeting, gentlemen, ladies. Let's get out into the cold. Thank you. Thank you.